Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and we will begin with board reports. Roma?
So I'll be keeping my board report slightly short because I'll be speaking a little bit, but recently with much of the board, I attended the spring student recognition and I got a chance to speak at the recognition. And it was a great opportunity, not just because I was able to speak, but because I was able to see a lot of what students have done, because even in my school, I think that I've seen it all, and then when you go out and see all of the kids in the county, you realize just how much our school system has to offer. And no matter how small we are, or no matter how busy we are in high school, there are some opportunities that teachers give us to engage with other students from other counties. And it's really a de-stresser, because like I said in the speech, I mean, I know a lot of us do it because, I mean, it does look good. When we apply to colleges, we need to show that we've done something, but also they love what they do, and when you love what you do, as many students said, it's not a chore, and it's just a passionate pursuit that they get to do.
So last week, I attended the STEM Day at Dinerd Elementary School. It was a lot of fun. I did go last year also, and Ms. Tyson had taken me around. She was kind of the one that headed up the day and coordinated all the volunteers, or volunteers from the base. It showed the students about taking blood pressure and about a pulse, and they had a mannequin there, so that was, you know, pretty cool. Then the first sergeant from ROTC and all their students, the ROTC students were there to assist wherever they needed to, but they also showed about the life raft and the life vest and, you know, just different floatable flotation devices. They had a guide dog. They also had drones. I know that some people from two different companies were there showing drones, and they had two small drones, and they were actually letting the kids operate them. So there was just a variety of things that the students were doing. They were doing their own programming with these little, I guess, like little robot things. And one of the girls was, little girl was showing me, you know, that it came, it came across the floor and then it talked to me, and then, you know, that it would back up it, you know, she had to go like so many feet and then it would turn around, so it was, it was a lot of fun to watch the kids, and they really did have a good time, and all the volunteers that did come out to make that day successful for them.
Yesterday, I attended the inauguration of Dr. Maureen Murphy at the College of Southern Maryland with Dr. Smith, and I was looking forward to going. It's sort of a homecoming for me. I taught there for a number of years, and I had a chance to see some of my colleagues and friends that I'd worked with. Dr. Gottfried, who is, I guess, considered professor emeritus, introduced Dr. Murphy, and it was kind of interesting because they were talking about the growth of the college. It was founded in nineteen fifty-eight. I think it was called initially Saint Charles or Charles County.
Charles County.
My wife actually taught there as well, and it has really grown to a major institution. I'm going by older numbers, but I think there's like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand students, both, what I would say, active and full-time and part-time on four campuses. In the last couple of years, I'm sure you're all aware, they built a new campus at Hughesville, and it's going to be, I think, science and technology, is that it?
Right.
And of course, they built a second building in Prince Frederick. There's ample room here in Leonardtown, I guess, down the road, so it's a really major university. The kids can get their degree in two years. They can go right up the street here to Airport Road at the Higher Learning Center and end up getting a PhD from one of a number of universities. So we're on the map, and it was very enjoyable for me to see some of my old friends.
So yesterday was a very busy day across the county and the state. I went up to the Maryland State Department of Education with Dr. Marr and Mr. Todd Burrows so we could congratulate Mrs. Lorick, who is the Chopticon, or is, excuse me, is the Saint Mary's County Teacher of the Year from Chopticon High School. So they honored all of the teachers at the twenty-three counties in Baltimore City at the State Board meeting, and we took pictures, and they all got to meet and greet each other and kind of have a little preview as to what is going to become part of their lives for the next twelve months. So it was, it was very exciting and very, very well-deserved honor for her, so I'm very happy, and I can't wait to see her video.
Thank you.
I attended the Academy of Finance culminating ceremony, which was held at Chopticon High School. It is one of our academy paths. We have one hundred thirty-seven students in the program, and I remember when it started, it had only about twenty students in it. So the program has grown exponentially, and it is an exciting program. Many of the students will go into four-year colleges and universities. Some will go to a two-year college and attend the College of Southern Maryland, and some of them will pursue other interests. But knowing about finance and accounting and financial literacy is good, no matter what field you go into. So I want to thank everybody that helped the students to be so successful. It is a wonderful program, and we try to provide as many opportunities as we can for our students to pursue different career choices and options. It was a wonderful program, and congratulations to the seniors who will be going on to other pursuits, and I'm just so happy for them. Thank you.
I attended the Fairlead Academy culminating ceremony that was held at the Forest Center recently. The students who were there to be recognized have persevered to, and worked really hard to, to complete all of their studies and to be able to be successful. It's an incredible program. I believe this was the eighth class of students that completed the four years, and so the impact that the system has been able to have by having this program in place has meant that many more students who were at risk of dropping out are, have been successful. And they've been successful because they've been in a different type of program, much smaller class sizes, very personalized attention, and, and almost to a student that got up to speak, they said some version of, "I really didn't want to start at Fairlead. I really didn't want to go there for ninth grade. My parents made me," or, you know, "I had to be there, but I soon discovered it was the best place to be." So congratulations to all of the students who completed that, those four years, and I love the fact that Mr. Smith has, Dr. Smith, sorry, has made a practice of, of giving the students a very special gift at the end to recognize they're, they're stepping off into their future, and it is a keychain with their year that they're graduating, a compass so that they'll always know their direction, and a blank key that he tells them that they have the opportunity to cut in any way they wish, that it's, it is up to them going forward, and that he hopes that, that they will take that on to success. So it was a great time.
Yeah, yeah. And cut key, and I shared that that's the, one of my multiple jobs as a teacher, you have more than one job sometimes to make ends meet, was working in one of those little key vestibules, cutting keys for people way back before they had that, an automated process. So I've been familiar with keys for a very long time. It has been, it has been an incredible, several weeks since we've met, we've recognized staff, we've recognized students, we've had Fairlead, we'd have the, the Academy of Finance, we've had the dinner for our first, our first-year hires where they kind of got together to talk about, they're very close, they're within twenty days of finishing at that time. We had the Forest Center completion ceremony, program completer ceremony yesterday, where close to five hundred students have finished programs. Mr. Egan is really so proud of those kids, Principal Egan, talking about that they have completed a program, they've earned industry certification, and many of them have earned college credits as well. It's all about all of these pathways. There are so many ways to get us through the woods. The Great Mills High School play as well this weekend, it gets, to get through the woods, and it's, it's quite a testament to the school system, to all of your leadership for, for helping us build these many, many ways the kids can, can get to the first milestone marker of their lives, graduation from high school, which is just next week. So we are looking, looking forward to it. So with that, thank you very much.
Great, well, you have, you have the next item.
Do I?
Yes, you do.
Indeed, I do, so, shall I, shall I have the privilege?
You have the privilege of choosing approaching, yes.
May I?
Dr. Marr, the rescue.
So I guess what we could do, I think it is most fitting if we'll just, we, how about if we make Roma come up here, Ms. Kinkaria come up here, so that we might appropriately present her. So Ms. Kinkaria, if you could, please. First, I'd like to present you with this lovely bouquet of fresh flowers, as wonderful and lovely and fresh and vibrant as you truly have been the last two years that we've worked together so closely on the board. We also have this lovely certificate of recognition. You've received probably stacks of these over the several years. This may join them on top, and thanks you, recognition for being a board member for the last two years. And finally, a lovely pen set that says, "Roma Kinkaria, student member of the Board of Education for Saint Mary's County, two thousand sixteen through two thousand eighteen," for two long years. And there's a lovely pen there and pad so you can write us notes and tell us of all the great and wonderful things you are doing in life.
And then for the more, then for the best part of all, to the card, with a more fun-like gift certificate for you.
Fun-like.
Yes, so as you go off to college, my studious little board member here, you need to remember, right? You have to kind of chill a little bit and have some fun, okay?
I'm a chill person.
She is. She's just like, "Oh, don't worry, we put it off. We can put that off. We don't have to do that. We're not to..." Thank goodness for you, because you have kept me honest for the last two years as we've planned some really big things together. You're the one that always has in her perfect script. Her, her notes are gorgeous, you know, the text to, if somebody writes a handwritten note, and usually you can turn it over to text, mine, it can't tell what, yours are perfect. Yours are, it's better than, it's better than typeface. You could have your own typeface, Roma Kinkaria typeface, it is that good. So with that, would you like, would you like to say?
I think, I think just as a board member, you have brought a lot, you have brought, you have brought a lot of good insight to us from your experiences at school, and I think all of us appreciate that, right? Because some of your comments, you know, are very astute, and we kind of sit back there and like, "Wow, that's a really good way to look at that." So I'm sure you will only continue that, and good luck.
Thank you.
Perspective and voice. And so with that, let's, let's hear a little bit of your own. Oh, you, oh, no!
No.
Yes!
I can sit down, because I can't hear you all so well.
Like you can.
Not as good as us.
Can we go sit down?
Yeah, sure, okay.
We'll sit down, okay.
No, I want you to stand up here, as I see you. So as was previously mentioned, I have been student member of the board for the past two years, but my desire to become student member began from quite some time ago. So just a few years back, I was sitting in the audience of a Board of Education meeting, and I sat through the whole thing, but I was particularly fascinated by the student member. Before that day, I hadn't heard about the role, so I didn't even know working with adults was just an option that students had, but that didn't stop me from realizing just how powerful the student voice could be in SMPS. So ever since that day, I gained an increasing awareness of just how much teachers and staff want us to be involved in what happens in the educational system. So eventually, I ran for the position in my sophomore year for a term during my junior year. In the beginning, I had a hard time narrowing my focus down, so in my first meeting with Dr. Smith, I just had to describe what I wanted to happen in the most words possible until he got the general gist of what I was saying. And I talked a lot about improving student-to-student relationships and making school a more positive atmosphere, and I was trying to increase student satisfaction and their perception about going to school, but there was no word or words that allowed me to tightly pack that. But eventually, my fellow students and I realized that we had to look outward. So we realized that even though we were supposed to focus on our own county, our county is just one of many, so if there was a problem that was happening here, chances were that it was happening elsewhere. So that's when we landed on the ideas of civility, respect, and support. Whether we're talking about two years ago or today, it seems as if many people have sometimes forgotten simply what it means to be kind to one another. So we, when we lost the basic ideas of civility and kindness, our environments became more figuratively hostile, and students became less encouraged to actively engage in school. So as a result of this discussion, we worked with the students to plan the two thousand seventeen Youth Summit, and we stressed the ideas of support and civility, and we highlighted how every student has a voice that they can use to make a change and a choice to determine what type of change they want to make. We had a lot of breakout sessions that allowed students and schools to go back and implement what they thought would be good. After the summit and my reelection for senior year, we regrouped and asked what would happen moving forward. So throughout this past school year, we talked a lot about school communication and also student-to-student relations, and in light of recent events nationally, we realized that our conversation from last year wasn't over. So at our two thousand eighteen summit, we focused on how it is important for students to use their voice, to speak up not only to help themselves, but also to help their fellow students. So our slogan was, "Be safe, be kind, be you," and we're going to elaborate that in much more depth later. But basically, we're trying to make sure that students were making wise and good decisions and that they were emotionally and physically safe. But above all else, we wanted students to remember that we had to embrace our quirks and differences. So at the end of the day, we're all different, and there are no ifs, ands, or buts about that, and we can choose to ignore that, or we can choose to embrace the differences, and as we strive to better our community, include everyone in the discussion. So ultimately, the reason I'm standing before you here today and talking is not because I was necessarily the best student for this job, but because I had tremendous support from students and SMPS staff. So from Mr. Smith to Dr. Marr, sorry, Dr. Smith to Dr. Marr, to members of the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, or SLAC.
Slackers.
There were, yeah, they're right in the audience.
Front row.
I know, right? There were so many students and adults who helped me through this journey. So we not only had quarterly SLAC meetings, but we also had frequent steering committee meetings that allowed us to plan these summits and plan the year. The change we made possible at schools was because of the whole system working together and not just because the student member was flying solo. As we planned meetings or held discussions, the students didn't just help work out the details, but they also taught me and taught each other more about our community. So that's, I think, the greatest thing about working together and what I've learned, it's that you teach more about the world, but you also learn more about yourselves. So as I move onward from Saint Mary's County Public Schools, I will never forget what I've learned as student member and just as a student. I've been in this county's school system for about fourteen years, and in these last two years, I have been reminded that no matter what you're doing, as long as you enjoy what you do and are making a difference, you will live a happy, fulfilling life. So for the next eight years, I will be attending the Virginia Commonwealth University and the Medical College of Virginia to become a physician, and after that, I have four to five years of residency and training to do. But no matter where I am or what specialty I choose, I will be indebted to this county's public schools for shaping me to become a more mature young woman, ready to step foot into the adult world. So with that, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce our new student member. So our new student member is in the audience, if I'm, her name is Lake Meadows, and if you can stand up if you want to. She is a junior at, at Leonardtown High School, and she is in the GIS program, and she has been very involved in her community, so she's been part of S two S and the Latin Honor Club, and she has participated in many events in the school. And actually, she moved here from Arizona after her ninth grade, and her perspective from another school system was actually what pushed her to run for the position. So without a shadow of a doubt, I know that Lake will bring a new, fresh voice for all of Saint Mary's County Public Schools to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll be okay. I'm gonna probably miss the decades out of you, Roma.
All right, next we have Mrs. Audrey Ellis with Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School and our alumni partnership.
Good evening, Ms. Ellis.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. Bannaker has a rich history that is deeply rooted in and connected to the history of Saint Mary's County. Tonight, I'm here to share a bit about Bannaker's history and to honor the alumni of Bannaker High School. They've maintained a connection to our community for decades. Giving back, staying connected, and maintaining a high emphasis on superior education has been their strong focus of theirs for that time. We're incredibly proud of our connections and partnership with our alumni groups. It's one of the primary things that makes Bannaker unique. As you walk through our campus, their involvement is evident. You will see plaques, historical pictures, and structures that document their ongoing involvement in making Bannaker the exceptional school that it is. Bannaker's history begins in the twenties, when it was an industrial art school and then an elementary school. In nineteen thirty-four, it became a high school for the African-American community. In forty-seven, it became an elementary, junior, and senior high school. From forty-seven to sixty-six, it served students from kindergarten through twelfth grade. In nineteen sixty-six, it returned to an elementary school as our middle school and high school students went to Leonardtown, Margaret Brent, and Chopticon. In nineteen seventy-four, the current media center and office were added, and at that time, the building served about three hundred students. Currently, Bannaker Elementary School services about seven hundred students from infants through fifth grade. The Loveville Building that we now call the Bannaker Early Childhood Center opened in nineteen eighty-three as a special education facility. The Loveville School was named after one of the first large landowners in the area, the Love family. In nineteen eighty-five, the pre-K and kindergarten classes at Bannaker were moved to Loveville, and the two buildings combined created the Bannaker-Loveville Elementary School complex. In May of two thousand one, the school became officially known as Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. You will now hear the Loveville Building affectionately referred to as the ECC or Little Ben. Alumni contributions. Our alumni groups have contributed to the Bannaker community for decades. I wanted to highlight a few for you tonight. When our FLO program was funded in Saint Mary's County Public Schools, the Bannaker alumni were the first to provide mentors for the Bannaker program. The alumni also funded and still funds the annual spring dinner, which is a field trip for the FLO students as a celebration of their accomplishments. The Bannaker alumni also restored the Bannaker High School nineteen sixty-two podium, which has been proudly used for our fifth-grade promotions and other celebrations. For several years, Chopticon High School would borrow it for their graduation. The podium and the alumni were honored during these graduations, highlighting Bannaker's rich history in our community. Our alumni groups hold annual fundraisers to continue to build community. All the proceeds are, as they say, to give back to their school. Sarah Swales from the nineteen fifty-eight graduating class has a wonderful collection of memorabilia and a slide presentation displaying Bannaker High School's history and community. This has been shared with the Bannaker community at evening events, promoting positive community relations. Just last year, the alumni worked closely with Saint Mary's County Public Schools to purchase and install a beautiful showcase in our lobby. You'll see historical documents as well as current student art being displayed in this It's important to our alumni that all students have the supplies he or she needs to be successful in school. Every year, hundreds of dollars of supplies arrive at Bannaker, sorted and organized for the distribution to students. The alumni also have provided funding for students who cannot afford to purchase their own copy of class magazines. The one thing that stands out about our Bannaker alumni is the pride they have in our school. Their memories and their gratefulness for the teachers and the education that they have received is evident in every event, contribution, and conversation that's had with them. Our Bannaker students, staff, and community significantly benefit from this sincere and special partnership between the past, the present, and the future. Tonight, the nineteen sixty graduating class of Bannaker High School is making a contribution to Bannaker Elementary School. We want to express our sincere appreciation for all of their donations and continued support to the Bannaker community. We know that these donations come from the heart with an authentic desire for Bannaker students to have all that they need to succeed. At this time, I would like to personally acknowledge those that are here in attendance with us tonight. So when I call your name, if you could come up and join me. First is our class president of the nineteen sixty class, Charles Smallwood. He's coming. John Frank Briscoe, Joseph Dade. We've got a few folks that were on the schedule but haven't made it in. Frances Frazier, Harriet Holly, Mary Jones, Barbara Thompson, Dolores Thompson, and Elsie Young. Now, we also have the privilege of having teachers from Bannaker High School with us tonight, so previous teachers, Mrs. Florence Lanham, Mrs. Jane Reed Fletcher, and Mrs. Loretta So I want to thank and welcome members of our Bannaker High School class of nineteen sixty, but again, also some teachers from our Bannaker High School, and I do believe Mr. Smallwood would like to say a few things.
Board members, and I do have a prepared script, but I tell you, after seeing one beautiful, one beautiful young lady came here today, sitting right here, this is one of the teachers that helped us in the class of nineteen sixty go forward, and because of a beautiful lady like this and many like her, this is why you see this group standing here before you, because we as a class, and I say this in just at one point, Frances and Dolores can tell you, we were deemed the worst class of the, of Bannaker School for many years, and for some odd reason, we happened to be one of the classes that decided that our school and the education that we received in this county was so important to us, and it's such a great honor to see the young one sitting here. with hopes, with hopes that the wonderful teachers we have here in St. Mary's County, they will take the time, take the time to give back to the schools that made us the people we are today. We have a current doctor coming forth here very shortly, in about twelve, thirteen years. Wonderful thing. However, it took many of you and her parents and a lot of strong teachers to say, "I'm going to guide you. I'm going to provide for you how to put together your life so that you can be compassionate, you can be responsible, you can do things not just for your selfish self, but for someone else." So tonight, and I will give you something that she doesn't know that I'm going to say this, but our original officer for our class was Mer- Mrs. Mary Leian Jones, am I correct? Yes, I am. The vice president? Vice president and valedictorian. Third valedictorian for the class of nineteen sixty. So proud of that. But you saw I got emotional because Mrs. Florence Lanham, many of you may know her as Mrs. Bailey, but Mrs. Florence Lanham taught us many years. For you young people that have no idea, she taught home economics. Have any idea what that is? Well, probably not. But the one thing that we want to do tonight, and Mrs. Ellis has given us the opportunity and has invited all of the class to come anytime to take a tour through the beautiful building that we have. The one thing that's still there are a couple of places that we treasured. The stage is still there, the original stage is still there. Part of the gym floor was destroyed by water, but they're doing everything in their power to restore it. The cafeteria is no longer there, but the doorways and all those same things are right there, so you can walk right from one, right? We used to have the cafeteria in one side of the building and wherever we'd eat would be in the gymnasium. So we'd have the gym and then we'd have to move the tables and then have gym classes there all at the same time, clean, really, wasn't it? But I digress just a moment. But the one thing that is very important to us is that we want to make sure, and Mrs. Ellis said it very, very, very nicely, that the needs of our children with limited resources, it is most important that they do not feel any pressure that, "Because I don't have, I can't do." So in order for us to make sure that they can do. Dolores, would you help me? We would like to present, Mrs. Ellis, if you could come out here, please. To the uh, the class of nineteen sixty would like to present to Bannaker Elementary School five thousand dollars. Doing things with those students who have limited resources. And you asked what that building was like before? Well, I'll tell you, there's the front of it right there. That was the old building and right there used to be the library, am I correct, Steve Dunus? The library was right there. And the elementary side of the building was on this side and the high school was over here. And we had wonderful things to do with Mr. Rines and so forth. And so you know that it is real. We do have the action. And we present this to you along with a certificate of appreciation, and you may place this anywhere in the school you so like, that reads, the cer- this certificate of appreciation is awarded to Benjamin Bannaker School. Now, we did that for, for a reason because we cannot say that it was a high school then, so Benjamin Bannaker School, for being an outstanding educational institution of high school students of the class of nineteen sixty and for the elementary students of today. Awarded this twenty-third day of May, two thousand and eighteen. Presented to you by myself, Charles Smallwood, and Dolores Thompson, our treasurer. And we'd like to also present this to you. And, oh, we're missing one. Where is it? We have one more student coming out there. John, John Frank Briscoe is another one of our students. So for that, Mrs. Ellis, thank you for allowing us to do what we can to give back to our alma mater. But more importantly, Board of Educations, I'd like for you all to please give a round of applause to this beautiful lady who took the time to teach us how to live. Mrs. Florence Lanham. I don't want to forget one other teacher who was not, who came immediately after, because she said nineteen sixty-six. Well, we had one, Loretta Somerville Collins, was also a teacher, which, uh, she's not here. Yeah, she's not here tonight, but we wanted to, um, pay honor to all of our teachers because, young people, that's how you move forward. Not only with your parents, but you have all of these educators who take the time, who take the time, who take the time to make sure you advance. But all you have to do is receive what they give. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this.
We have like a five-minute recess, we'll take some pictures.
I'm so sorry. I'll take it all out.
Public hearing on policy J H C J. Do we have any comments? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Public comment. Okay. The consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I, I second.
All those in favor? I opposed. That motion is carried, and our first action item is Mr. Stephen Witten and chimney height reductions at Esperanza Middle School and Great Mills High School.
Good evening. So this is a little different than most, um, action items I bring to you. Why isn't it? I've done this several times, I don't know what I did different today. Um, this is a little different than most items I bring to you. Most items I bring to you are usually to, to replace something or to improve something or to fix something or a contract to keep things in working order as time goes on. This one is different in that it is purely to remove something. So, um, during, um, our, our regular in-house maintenance inspections of the roof and subsequent, actually that same year, the public school construction program selected, um, it selects four schoo- schools a year to inspect. Um, both inspections, um, uh, realized a concern with the, um, the older chimneys at, um, Great Mills High School and Esperanza Middle School. We contacted a structural engineer, um, he came out and inspected the condition of the chimneys, and he was asked to report any concerns in his recommendations. The structural engineer recommended at that time the top half of the chimney be removed and reported no immediate concerns with the chimneys. Um, he did, however, note that, um, we needed to either do repairs or plan to have them, uh, removed within the next four years. Additionally, SMCPS considered the chimney structures. Other things that were floated through our head is these chimney structures actually have no functional purpose anymore. There are boilers still connected and hot waters connected to others, but, um, modern technology uses blower motors to create draft in boilers and not the height of a chimney. They used to use, the height of a chimney would create a higher draft. The average age of these structures is sixty years. Um, one is fifty-eight years old, the other one is sixty-three years old. Um, and the repair costs, uh, we had this structural engineering, we used, um, RS means also to estimate the repair cost. The repair cost is about seventy percent of cost to remove them. And for some perspective, Esperanza Middle School, this is, uh, viewed from the outside of the school and how tall the chimney is, and you can see the cracks on the, um, the side of the chimney area. Here. And I know this is hard to read, the chimney height is a total of thirty-eight feet in height. It is approximately five foot two or five foot two inches by five foot, no, five foot eight inches by five foot eight inches square. It's quite a large structure. And the thirty-eight foot is off the, the crest of the roof, not from its base. The chimney does extend down into the building. Uh, Great Mills High School is not as massive, um, let me forward to that. You can see the deterioration at the top of the chimney area there. There's a picture of the entire chimney from the roof. This is a part of the, uh, old building so that you're looking into a very small courtyard that's not typically used anymore, which used to be on the exterior of the building before the additions were made. And this structure is seventeen foot off the roof and, um, its girth is, um, a four foot two inch square. And both of these chimneys, uh, we're proposing to remove down to a height of four foot six inches. Um, the, the areas of focus of this contract would be to protect the existing roof and the roof warranties. The largest thing about taking down, repairing, or demoing these is protecting the roof surfaces underneath. Uh, demoing the chimneys to a height of four foot six inches and recapping the chimneys. We decided not to take the chimneys down to the roof structure. We still have to put a small stack in for the existing equipment. Um, and we would get into, um, roof work, which would drive the cost of this project, uh, quite rapidly. So we chose four foot six inches, it's a nice working height. We wouldn't have to put scaffolding up on the roof, which, um, drives cost and, um, time in, in maintaining that. The procurement method we used for this bid was, um, outline, as, uh, ITB has outlined in board policy DJC. Both ITB SMCPS twenty eighteen M CHR EMS and ITB SMCPS twenty eighteen M CHR GMHS bids, uh, were posted on email and marketplace and the purchasing website on April seventh, bids were open on May tenth. It was, the bid was exposed to four hundred and eighty-three contractors, according to email and marketplace. Five bids were received, complete bid tabulations have been provided with the, uh, agenda item. Colossal Contracting Incorporated provided the lowest responsible price for, uh, chimney removal projects in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And with that, any questions?
I was just wondering, I know in the past this might have been a problem, but, um, you sent it out to four hundred and eighty-three, but only five responded, was that normal to have that?
We sent it out to, um, we, we posted on email and marketplace, and when you do that, you select certain groups of contractors that may be interested in that work and that the people, the companies totaled was four hundred and eighty-three contractors were supposedly notified through email and marketplace.
Okay.
We don't contact them directly. We do, however, contact contractors directly that we know are familiar and we don't work with before.
So the one that we're working with is one that had a good reputation or we've worked with before, Chris? Thank you.
So what I'm understanding is you're taking it down to four feet, six inches from the ground? It's not from the roof area?
Uh, no, I apologize, that is from the roof.
From the roof, okay.
From the roof base, yes.
Okay. And the lower structure is fine?
Yes.
Okay.
And it can be maintained at a, if we have to do maintenance, it's, it's a lot less cost because the, the way they're constructed currently, we would have to put a lot of scaffolding and a lot of protection around the roof, and then we would have to put protection across the roof to get materials there to actually maintain and work on it.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
Uh, well, this kind of adds to, how would you take the roof down without scaffolding or are you going to put scaffolding?
They could use a crane on Esperanza Middle School. We've left that to the contractors, the specifications were written. In a performance, they have to guarantee the roof, they have to guarantee, they have to propose the plan before they start work. We have to agree to it. We're going to do a movie picture and a thermographic of the roof before, and then after the work's done, thermographics show leaks really well, so if there's a leak there and it's there afterwards, it's, it's my problem. If there's a leak there, not a leak there before and after, it's, it's, it's the contractor's problem, so.
Uh, I'm just working with the numbers, you have approximately sixty thousand to take down the chimneys that would tell me around forty-five thousand dollars if you re- to repair it. You had said something about seventy percent.
Yes.
Uh, I guess it leads to the question about the life cycle of the roof itself. How old is the roof and does it need to be repaired anytime soon?
Great Mills High School's roof is being repaired. I apologize, I, I swear, I looked up every question I could think that might get asked. I did not think about that one. Um, Great Mills High School is, is within the next six years because it's in the current CIP. Esperanza Middle School, we just recently redid the roof in that area, not directly around the chimney in that area, but Esperanza is not within the next six years to my recollection.
Okay.
In the CIP.
Well, you know where I'm leading to.
Yes.
And, uh, so if, if for example, the roof was ready to be repaired, you know, that calculus might change a little bit. Uh, my first question that you already answered was the draft. I, I, I was thinking, you know, that it was a functional, uh, uh, chimney and if you took it down, you know, how are you going to compensate for the loss of, you know, the efficiency of the boilers? But you've answered that, so you, 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 you're batting fifty-fifty here. It's really the only, I, I, I see what you're doing, it's probably the best of unpleasant options that you have. It, uh, is to take it down. Obviously, you're going to abandon in place the exist, you know, the, the remaining chimney.
The remaining chimney, I actually stay functional.
Oh, well.
A- as an architectural, um, skirt for, there are boilers. So when these were originally installed, you were dealing with natural draft and you, they, both schools were burning oil. They were burning a number four, uh, thicker oil, which required water, I, I apologize. Now, both schools, at Great Mills, there's no longer a boiler connected, there's three water heaters. They're all natural gas.
Right.
And at Esperanza Middle School, instead of having one large oil-burning boiler, it's now in one natural gas boiler with a blower motor, so it doesn't need the draft.
Right. That's all I have, very good.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Very good, you did a thorough job and anticipated all of the questions except for one.
Um, I don't have any questions about what you've proposed here, but it does beg the question, what kind of, um, examination are you doing for the other schools that also have chimneys? And is this a recurring issue that we're going to be dealing with?
We, we have built in, in the past five or six years, we have, we, we, we have really started to look at all our masonry work a lot harder. Uh, before that, it was when it caused a problem. And that's how this got picked up and, um, so we are inspecting all of it, is what I can tell you. After the problems that, um, came about, this was picked up by inspection, it wasn't supposed to pick it up. It was picked up by a roofer, it was up there. It wasn't, it wasn't a inspection of the chimney. So, and then, um, the public school. So we are looking at all masonry a lot more. Um, I can tell you that. Um, I have, I, I wish I could tell you that we have five more chimneys like this, but I don't really know that off the top of my head. The older schools, um, some of them were demoed when they renovated them. But I, I can get that answer for you if you'd like, I just, I don't have it. But we are looking at all masonry, we, 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 we did repointing this past year at, um, Oakville Elementary School and Leonardtown Middle School on the southeast side of the building, where the repointing is replacing the mortar between the brickwork where it started to fall off.
Had to do it on our chimney.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't think you need to get back to us, uh, at least not for my sake. Um, Billy was just in a, wanting to have an understanding of, um, what kinds of inspections or, you know, that, that you are looking at other schools um, with respect to, uh, the chimneys and, and the masonry and ensuring that if we, if it appears we're going to have an issue, um, that we can deal with it earlier rather than later, so that would be it.
That we are, thank you.
Thank you very much, that's all.
Nothing else? May I have a most, uh, excuse me, a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of ITB SMCPS twenty eighteen M CHR EMS and ITB SMCPS twenty eighteen M CHR GMHS to Colossal Contractors Incorporated.
and ITB SMCPS twenty eighteen M, CHR, GMHS to Colossal Contractors Incorporated in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars to perform chimney height reductions at Esperanza Middle School and Great Mills High School. The Board further authorizes an additional contingency of four thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Just straight away. Uh, Mr. Hartwick, uh, relocation of the modular units.
Mister, when they, when they take these chimneys down, will they be, um, removing all of the, the brick and the debris? Or will they be leaving brick?
Well, there's always a clause in, I apologize, there's always a clause in our contract that if we want something left behind
Mm-hmm.
for, um, either historical purpose or sentimental purposes, we can take some or all. This contract, um, we haven't started yet and we haven't made that decision, but the intent is for them to remove it all off some.
Might just check with Great Mills High School, um, uh, and Esperanza to see if there might be a reason that they had for perhaps wanting some of that brick. Just a thought.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Uh, this action item is a contract award for the relocation of a state-owned unit, uh, to Fairly Academy Two. Let me just give a little background here. Uh, Fairly Academy Two is housed in a larger modular complex, they use about six units. But that complex was originally, uh, constructed to support the renovation of Leonardtown High School in two thousand. Um, Fairly Academy Two is in need of additional classrooms and support spaces are really crammed into those six units. Um, a couple of years ago, we moved two state-owned modular units, these are four classrooms each, so they're thirty-six hundred square feet, they're large units. We relocated those to Spring Ridge to support, um, the limited renovation in two thousand fourteen. One of the challenges that we had here is the, the Fairly Academy, if you know that site, is constrained by very limited parking. And it's, uh, right up against a, uh, practice field used by Leonardtown High School. Leonardtown High School Athletic Department has a shortage of fields, so that was a critical, uh, consideration for us to try to preserve that field. So, when we went to, uh, the other issue was, um, that we needed for code reason to separate the new unit from the existing units by twenty feet. So, again, that was a little complication. Um, after looking at all many options, uh, we decided that, uh, the best, uh, solution was to move one modular unit, uh, that would not compromise the adjacent practice field. Um, that one modular unit will, um, accommodate the immediate needs of Fairly Two and allow us to go into some of the existing spaces and, uh, spruce those up, renovate those, uh, as well. Um, I mentioned there were two units down at Spring Ridge Middle School. Uh, our plan is to, uh, move, uh, the second unit to Park Hall Elementary School next year to support the systemic ATAC renovation and roof replacement, uh, in order to, to get enough space to work around the building. So, procurement wise, uh, we did advertise as well on email and marketplace. Uh, this is a competitive sealed bid. Uh, part of the, uh, bidding documents required mandatory site visits. Four contractors, uh, requested plans, uh, only two made site visits. Uh, and we received one bid from Hash Construction Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I will note that, uh, Hash Construction actually constructed or installed that, that modular unit, uh, complex at Leonardtown High School. So, they, they know the complex, they, they know these units. So, and we have found in, in recent years that there is a limited number of contractors with the experience of moving, moving these, uh, large state units. They're actually segmented into five sections, you see from that photograph. Uh, you have to have two cranes working in concert to, to move them, uh, so it is, uh, quite a task. And I will say, when we bid, uh, Spring Ridge Middle School, we only had two bid on that project. Uh, and those two bidders are no longer doing this work in our area. So, the scope of the work is, is summarized here, obviously, um, dissembling the unit at Spring Ridge, uh, removing those existing foundations and modifying, uh, the deck that remained down there. Uh, move it to Fair, Fairly Academy Two, new foundation, uh, reassemble the unit, uh, modify the existing deck at Fair, Fairly Two, uh, provide new electrical service. There will be some interior alterations, um, new ceiling grid tiles and replace the fire alarm, uh, devices to match what is currently the system at Fairly Academy Two. And we'll also replace all the data and public address, uh, connection. So, in terms of the financial summary, this, this project was funded over multiple, uh, fiscal years, from two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, from local and state sources. The majority of the funds, uh, were allocated in two thousand seventeen. So, the original balance for that project was six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, to date, we've spent approximately sixteen thousand dollars in design, uh, support. Uh, Hash Construction, again, was their bid of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And for this project, we're gonna be asking authorization for a construction contingency of twenty-five thousand. We're expecting that we will revert a hundred and nineteen thousand back to the state, but we, we have started the conversations with the state about the Park Hall. So, that would be part of the state, uh, twenty twenty, uh, CIP. So, that leaves us with a balance of just over two hundred and thirty-seven thousand to accomplish those, those other items. Uh, one of the things I would, we're looking very carefully at is if you're familiar with Fairly Two, there is a front canopy that runs length in front and, uh, it's in not very good condition. Uh, it kinda goes up and down and up and down. So, we're looking at, at the possibility of re- uh, rebuilding that. Uh, so, we really have a more, a consistent line across the front. I think that would have a huge improvement on the appearance of, of, of that facility. So, it is gonna be our recommendation that you award to Hash Construction in an amount of two hundred and thirty thousand. They are, we feel that that's an equitable, uh, and responsible bid, um. How is that? Take question?
Um, just if the Board approves, how soon can, uh, the project begin? Like how?
When will the project begin?
Yeah.
It's gonna begin pretty quick because these, um, we'll probably get, we're gonna try to get in to start the prep work at Spring Ridge and Fairly Two, uh, as early as next week.
Oh, okay.
Will it be in, will it be, sorry, didn't mean to make that face. Uh, will it interfere at all with, like, student activity or anything like that?
I'm sorry.
Will it interfere at all with student activities?
No, I mean, we're coordinating with both principals to make sure we can do that, so we don't anticipate we will.
And then how long do you think it'll be stretched out for?
It, it, it'll probably be early August before we get that unit completed.
Okay, thank you.
But it'll be open by the first day of school.
Yeah.
That is the, that is the goal.
That is the goal.
That is the goal.
The goal forever.
You always, you always get nervous when, when you say that and then Mr. Hartwick laughs.
We all know where the goal's going, it's just, you know, how much current there is.
Good, it's good to have a deadline, right?
Right, exactly, right. We all do our best work with.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, um, have you considered at all about just abandoning the unit and putting a new unit in?
Great question. Now, the advantage of this project is the state is contributing fifty-eight percent of the cost, which they wouldn't do for non-state-owned unit, so.
Uh, is there any, in, in the scope of work, I didn't see any, uh, plumbing wastewater hookups, is, is, is that's not a part of the scope?
We're, we're gonna rough in some plumbing for future use, but it's not needed right now, so.
Um, and the last question, um, you said you feel comfortable with the one bid. Uh, do, do you have, uh, did you do a, uh, internal cost estimate of the relocation before you went out to bid? And if so, how did that compare with your bid with, with Hash?
We were, we were about a hundred and ninety thousand.
And they came in at, uh?
Two thirty.
What they came in at? Two, two thirty.
Two thirty, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Um, we've used Hash Construction in the past, they, um, developed the, um, buildings there between the Forest Center and, uh, Leonardtown High School. So, they have the corporate knowledge and they had background and they are one of the few companies who still does this.
Correct.
And it's a major project when you look at the things that they have to do and have working by the time the students get back in school. So, thank you very much for doing a thorough job.
That Fairly will be happy to be able to spread out a bit more than they're currently able to do, so, thank you very much.
With that, may I have a action item or a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award of SMCPS twenty eighteen O seven DSS DC to Hash Construction Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the relocation of a four-classroom state modular unit to Fairly Academy Two. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
I, closed. Motion carried, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
All right. Next up is our fiscal year twenty nineteen operating budget with Dr. Smith and Ms. McCord.
Good evening, Mrs. McCord.
Good evening, Dr. Smith.
It's seven fifteen, in forty-five minutes, they will drop the puck for the Capitals game. Game seven is only the Capitals like to do.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Make your questions, short, sweet, done.
Good thing you don't live far away.
Yeah. I purposely didn't watch the first period of the last game and it was scoreless. And then about halfway through the second period, I'm like, I just, I, ah.
Don't you get the alerts on your phone?
Yes, and there wasn't one for the whole first period.
I used to get it from the Penguins.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we have a budget, that's, that's what she's gonna tell you.
We have a budget, yes.
Ta-da!
We have a budget.
Here we go.
We have a budget, we have a budget that will work.
After months and months of, um, planning and collaboration, we finally have a budget for your approval. So, the budget that you proposed totaled two hundred and sixteen million dollars and that included one hundred and four million dollars in local funding and one point nine million dollars in local fund balance. Those were the numbers that we were waiting for and we finally received numbers from the county commissioners last week and that is one hundred and three point eight million dollars in county funding, which represents a one point six percent inc- one point six million dollar increase in local county funding over the current fiscal year. This is one point five million dollars in maintenance of, over and above maintenance of effort. Other changes over the current year's budget is fifty-seven thousand dollar reduction in the charter school fund balance, two hundred thousand dollar increase in local fund balance, one point five million dollar increase in state aid, two hundred and five thousand dollar increase in federal funds and three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in other funds. For a total bottom line increase over the current fiscal year, three point nine million dollars and a total budget for your approval of two hundred and fourteen point two million dollars, representing a one point eight seven percent very nominal increase over the current fiscal year. So, there were items that we had to remove from the proposed budget. Those items were the non-recurring funded items for technology refresh, textbooks, classroom furniture and replacement vehicles, and the recurring funding items for the evening high school and the timekeeping software. However, there were certainly many, many items that we were able to maintain in the budget. Primary was the investment in our people for this negotiated step increases offset by the healthcare changes, the special education position conversions, two unrestricted and two restricted from ten months to eleven months, and one nurse position conversion from ten months to eleven months. Support for our students, for the NJROTC instructor, two guidance counselors, one and a half charter school teaching positions, the high roads program continuation, college and career readiness software, as well as sustaining our system, increases in the bus contracts, three building service workers, one fiscal secretary floater mentor, a webmaster, one safety and security assistant, as well as a human resources and workforce diversity coordinator. The county commissioners also approved a, uh, reserve of one million dollars put aside for safety and security in their budget. A future budget adjustment would be required on both our behalf and the county commissioners, um, at a later date. So, at this time, we're looking for your approval on the FY two thousand nineteen budget.
Does anyone have any questions? Rem. Mm-hmm. Any?
It, I just, the local fund balance of one point nine million, that was what we had planned to use for the, um, uh, non-recurring funding, the technology refresh and so forth, correct?
That's correct.
Um, so, at this time, we're not able to do that, but, um, nope, I don't have any questions. I just appreciate that the commissioners worked through things and enabled us to go forward with this.
Karen?
Yes, oh, I have a question, I guess it's for Dr. Smith, um, but in terms of evening high school,
I know that was, I was in the items removed, uh, section.
Right.
Uh, is there a chance that later down the road we will find, I mean, because I can't remember who came, but they raved about, um, the results from the first pilot year, so is that something that's looking into?
Yes. Well, so, the way we were able to offer evening high school this year is we got about halfway through the school year and then we did what any good business does, you take a look at your money, you look at your spend rate, you look at, um, positions that have your f- flat salary savings and we determined there was enough money that we could stand up a, a version of evening high school and offer that to students and specifically target students who were in their senior year and were at risk of not being able to graduate because they couldn't fit the work that they needed to do in the regular school day. So, we were able to stand it up. I'm hopeful that we'll find ourselves in a similar position next year. Um, this budget, as it's proposed, is, is exceptionally tight. It's, um, there's a lot, there's a lot of good in it, um, but we are, we're gonna have to watch every penny as we go through the year. So, it is, of course, our goal and I think everybody on the board feels very strongly that we wanna be able to offer every option possible to get kids across the stage, which will be next week. Um, so, we, we will be, we will be working very hard to see if we can do that.
Yeah. That's it, okay. Anyone, anything else?
No.
Okay, with that and all this hard work for this budget, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board.
What?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty nineteen operating budget as presented and forward to the Commissioners of Saint Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. Motion carried, thank you. And sign and send it over, thank you. Ms. Mandis, Mr. Skinner. STEM Academy in Rome, are you back up there again?
I'm back up.
Okay.
She's in the audience now.
I'm gonna use the microphone and walk around.
Ooh, yeah.
She could be hostess.
Great.
Bookended by students.
Oh, oh. Oh, and we get the wire.
Just in case if you need to.
To, uh, we will be.
Good evening, Board of Ed, um, good evening, Dr. Smith, thank you. Um, my name's Denise Mandis, I'm the supervisor of instruction of the academy programs, advanced placement and library media. Um, I've had the distinct honor of sitting before you now several times to, um, attest to the wonderful nature of the academy programs within Saint Mary's County. So, last but certainly not least, um, we'd like to take some time to highlight the STEM Academy, um, at Great Mills High School and the wonderful things that our STEM Academy teachers and students have done, um, throughout this year and of course, throughout their tenure within the STEM Academy. So, I'd like to also introduce Mr. Alan Skinner, who is the STEM Academy Department Chairperson. And with that, I'm gonna switch seats with Roma and kinda turn it over to the stars of the show here.
To what?
Can you, can you do that? Yeah.
All right, good evening, thank you.
Alright, good evening, thank you, uh, Board, for this opportunity. Um, I think we'll start, I know that many of you are familiar with the STEM Academy, but we'll start with just an overview of, uh, some of the key elements of the STEM Academy. Uh, it's good to remind ourselves that the STEM Academy, the high school and the STEM Academy is a four through nine, uh, four through twelve program, but we're here to talk about the high school, uh, version of the STEM Academy, and, uh, it's actually been around for more than a decade. You have to, sometimes, it's amazing that it's been around that long. Uh, we graduated our first set of seniors eleven years ago, right? So, fairly famous, uh, well-known, uh, famous for being the first of the academies, famous for being the most successful of the academies, uh, also famous for a emphasis on rigor and relevance. That's been a key, uh, mantra of ours ever since the, the beginning. So, we're also known for giving opportunities for students for many national, international STEM competitions. That includes, uh, things like Bot Ball and Vex Robotics, uh, things like the Team America Rocketry Challenge, um, we do Cyber Patriot opportunities, they have, uh, Science Fair, both regional and international Science Fair, and even new programs, things like Stellar Explorers, is something we started this year. Uh, the cornerstone, if you will, the capstone of the high school STEM program is the internship and research aspect that takes place during students' uh, junior and senior years. Uh, we have a core of community sponsors, community partners, that actually provide professional, uh, individual mentors for each of our STEM students, and each student is required to spend a minimum of a hundred hours with, uh, that, uh, tutelage with that mentor. Um, in truth, many of our students spend much more than a hundred hours, some of them as much as three hundred hours during that, uh, that internship. This is a list of the supporting community sponsors for this year's graduating seniors. Uh, I'd like to thank all of the sponsors, but specifically highlight Saint Mary's Hospital, uh, Navair, NOKAD, um, and the Saint Mary's Watership. Those partners have been with us since the beginning consistently providing opportunities, uh, since, uh, we began. Um, I would also like to say, uh, we're always looking for more partners. We'll change the font size of this thing.
Add a second slide.
And add a second slide, we'd love to group to do that. So, tonight, it's, uh, really a great honor, uh, and pleasure for me to be able to share with you two, uh, of our exemplary seniors, and they're gonna share their experience in this internship and research program. Uh, so, I would also like to say, this was their last day of high school classes.
Yeah.
So, they've added something onto that last day, already in a good mood. Uh, so, let me introduce you first, uh, Mr. James Kelly.
Uh, good evening, my name is James Kelly, and tonight I'll be speaking about my internship experience this past summer. I conducted my internship at the Johns Hopkins University Applied Physics Laboratory, uh, interning under the mentorship of Mr. Connor Piles. So, the Johns Hopkins University Applied Physics Laboratory, commonly referred to as APL, is a research institution located in Laurel, Maryland, which works with a number of organizations and government agencies, helping to develop projects and provide tech- technical expertise. Um, during my time at APL, my work was primarily focused on the modular prosthetic limb. Uh, the modular prosthetic limb is a federally funded project primarily aimed at developing advanced prosthetics that provide as much functionality and dexterity as possible in a prosthetic limb. The manner in which the prosthetic is controlled is one of its most novel attributes. Um, prior to use, a surgical procedure is performed on an amputee that reroutes nerve endings that would have gone into, uh, the limb that has been amputated into living muscle tissue. By measuring activity in this new region of muscle, um, impulses from the brain meant to control the amputated limb, uh, can be measured in terms of muscle activity and used to be controlled, uh, to control the prosthetic. Um, this allows prosthetic to be controlled simply as a normal arm is controlled, uh, by thinking about it. It is why this man can have full control of two above shoulder prosthetics after having lost, lost both of his arms decades ago. Um, so, throughout the course of my internship, I was largely afforded the opportunity to work on a number of independent tasks. My work on the project primarily revolved around software development. Initially, all of the prosthetics controlling software was developed in MATLAB. This was great for early prototyping, but was for, uh, but not for everyday use. Um, for that to happen, it needed to be ported, uh, to a software that could operate on a mobile platform, uh, primarily an application on, on one's phone. Um, my internship coincided with this transitionary period in the project. A code platform was being developed, um, in the Python, Python programming language, and I developed, uh, functionality and, and add- added to what was a, uh, already existed in the MATLAB, uh, codebase, uh, to support, uh, this new mobile application. The first major task I was assigned was restructuring how the code processes, processes incoming data, data. Feature extraction is an import, is an important aspect of signal processing that helps to identify important characteristics from filtered data. Uh, in the context of, uh, the prosthetic, these signals are electric si- signals, uh, measured from, um, mu- muscle actions. Uh, extracted features help to identify what action the user is trying to get the prosthetic to perform, whether closing the hand or moving the elbow, or any sort of, uh, grip patterns. Uh, there are a number of documented computational techniques that can be used to extract such usable values. Um, so I implemented seven new feature extraction techniques into the signal processing scheme. Additionally, um, I updated signal processing, uh, and made it, making it more robust and easy to implement new feature extraction techniques as they are developed or s- uh, desirable in the future. Um, initial testing of this new updated signal processing scheme indicated that when optimized, um, it could improve classification accuracy, uh, of the, uh, software platform, what, of determining what they were trying to get the user to perform by thirteen percent, uh, as illustrated in this graphic. The first set of bars, uh, depicts the classification accuracy of the original, uh, software, and the second, uh, depicts the classification accuracy on the updated software that I worked on. Um, so, one of the primary goals of the modular prosthetic limb was the ability to fit the prosthetic to any amputation type. At the time I began my internship, such functionality had yet to be built into the mobile platform. It was configured for a single arm above the elbow. The second task I was d- assigned was to increase the potential configurations for the prosthetic, so that the mobile en- mobile environment could be applied to any amputation type. I was able to implement control for any potential configuration of amputation on a single arm or even both arms at once. Um, this will allow for such bilateral control as seen in these images. Um, additionally, I implemented support for, uh, new data acquisition, um, devices to accommodate above shoulder amputee data. My entire internship experience was certainly challenging, but I found it to be incredibly rewarding. The software I developed is part of the project's code repository, um, and it can be used by researchers in regular trials. Not only was it an amazing learning experience, but I was able to develop something that is positively impacting a project that can do so much good. Um, with that, I would now like to turn the floor over to Roma Cincaria, who will s- be speaking about her work on a, the intensive research-based case study portion of STEM curriculum.
Should we just round this?
That's good.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, so, as Jada mentioned, my internship was sort of unique in the sense that it was a research-based project, that my case study and my internship were basically one in the same. Uh, so I completed the internship at the Saint Mary's College of Maryland under the mentorship of Dr. Aileen Ba- Bailey. Um, so, my internship dealt with a great deal of neuroscience. So, before I begin, as a bit of background, essentially for the past fifty years, the scientific community has relied on a lot of antidepressants like Prozac or Zoloft, and, uh, they have been staple medications that you can find on the market. But the issue is that these drugs take about three to eight weeks to achieve their therapeutic effect, and even then, they're ineffective in about fifty percent of patients, especially those with severe cases of depression like PTSD. So, what scientists have done has recently proposed a new explanation of depression called the excitatory synapse hypothesis. Uh, so basically, when a person is persistently stressed, your body expresses stress hormones at high levels, and the hormones continue to activate sensitive, sensitive areas of the brain, like the hippocampus and the prefrontal cortex, both of which help processes reward. Uh, so the hyperactivity in these regions damages excitatory synapses, which are pretty much synapses in which a presynaptic neuron's active potential decreases the probability of a postsynaptic neuron factor action potential. So, this is just a complicated me, uh, way of saying that stress hinders communication between two cells in the brain. Since the brain is a complex structure full of inner woven pathways, weakened synaptic transmission in one area can cause a decline in the brain's entire reward system and result in the abnormalities that we see as depression. Fortunately though, in recent years, scientists have investigated compounds like ketamine, which are able to restore synaptic strength by targeting chemicals like glutamate and dopamine, which are chemicals in your brain that control mood, cognition, and attention. But the issue, as many of you know, ketamine is known as a date rape drug, so it has very many abuse liabilities, so it can't be used clinically. That said, during my internship, I worked with institutions that developed a compound called L six, which mimics ketamine in speed and efficacy, but lacks the harmful side effects. So, um, I will be explaining how L six reverses the brain back to its normal state of mind, and as I explain the sequence of events, you can look at the key at the bottom to understand what I'll be saying. Uh, so, in step one.
That's gonna have to be a pretty big key for me.
I'll, I'll be explaining, sorry, uh, so.
I've got the big screen.
Uh, in step one, L six directly acts on the hippocampus and the prefrontal cortex by binding to neurons in both structures. So, L six binds receptor sites that GABA would normally bind to. Uh, GABA is a neurotransmitter that inhibits the activation of other neurons. So, when L six binds receptors, it excites the neuron by preventing GABA from inhibiting the neuron. This is just like a double negative. You're preventing inhibition, so excitation occurs on the whole. In step two, the excited neurons in the hippocampus and prefrontal cortex release glutamate onto neurons in the nucleus accumbens, which is a brain, um, a region of the brain's reward circuitry. Uh, the excited neurons in the nucleus accumbens once again release GABA onto the ventral tegmental area, which is once again, uh, helps process reward in the brain. Um, since GABA is inhibiting inhibitory neurons, activation occurs on the whole. And then last, lastly, the excited ventral tegmental area releases, um, releases dopamine onto neurons in the hippocampus and prefrontal cortex. So, pretty much, you are back to where you began in the loop of events. This means that a previously depressed individual can return to their normal state of mind when L six acts on the brain. This is why L six and the excitatory synapse hypothesis are so promising in the scientific community. I have to say, however, that what I just described is a bit of an oversimplification of what's actually occurring in the brain. There are a lot of details that I took out, one because they're, they were even complex for me, even with the neuroscience background. So, during my internship, my mentor helped me understand a lot of these microscopic details, but luckily, my internship was mainly more about macroscopic details of experimenting on animals with the drug. So, what I did during my internship was conduct tests on mice to determine how effective L six was as an antidepressant. All of the tests I conducted, uh, never hurt the mice or never induced pain, but they were meant to irritate them to the point that they would become stressed. So, for all of the rats I had, um, and I took care over the summer, I followed the same general procedure for experimentation. Uh, in step one, I conducted a series of baseline tests to determine their normal p- preferences for pleasurable stimuli like sucrose or social interaction. This is just like humans liking to eat sweet food or liking to interact with others. Uh, step two involves stressing the rats using a particular paradigm or model to induce depression. Uh, step three involved repeating the test I conducted in step one. So, the depressive-like rats showed anhedonia, or a lack of interest for pleasurable stimuli. This just meant that they didn't have any interaction, uh, with other rats, or they didn't like sweet foods as they did before. So, their anhedonia showed me that the stresses I had put them on were effective. Uh, the depressive-like rats plateaued in their weight gain, they drank less water than before, and they also stopped grooming themselves as carefully. Uh, next came step four, when I injected L six into all of my rats, and then after twenty-four hours, step five followed, when I analyzed my results. So, I looked at the pre-stress or the baseline data and compared it with the post-injection data that I'd just collected. There were few differences in the two sets of results, so I was able to say that L six successfully reversed the depressive effects, uh, that was caused by the stress period. Um, this was definitely a multifaceted study, and I couldn't actually, uh, s- say the specifics of the, uh, results that I had because for the next two years, it's actually going to continue. Uh, we have to show to pharmaceutical companies that the drug is safe not only on rats, but on humans. So, I'm, um, happy to say that next summer, actually I will, this summer, sorry, uh, I will be going back and continuing to work on this, um, very useful project. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't know if you feel that, but we're all much smarter than we were.
Or we just realized how far behind y'all are.
If nothing else, if you do, some of that went over your head, that's okay, just realize that this internship program is giving these students an opportunity to work that is well beyond high school, um, very, and may well be beyond what they may do in college, uh, uh, but it does showcase, um, some talent and also some, uh, motivation on the parts of the students. Uh, and I would like to say to them, you really make us look very good. Someday, there's no doubt, I'm gonna be sitting around with a group of friends, we're having dinner, and I'm gonna say, hey, you know, Roma Cincaria, James Kelly? They were my students, and those people are gonna be impressed, those people are gonna be impressed. Now, these are just two of our thirty-one.
As long as you use it for good. Okay, 'cause I've seen.
Use your powers for good.
Yes.
You don't know Roma and James very well.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm, I'm assuming.
These are two of our thirty-one, uh, seniors this year that are graduating. Uh, here are the rest of them. This picture is taken from our STEM showcase on April nineteenth. Uh, this event amazingly is free. It's open to the public, uh, guests can come and learn, uh, and meet each one of these. You can actually touch them, you can shake their hands, each one of these individuals. Uh, several of you have been there before, but we invite you, uh, again, uh, come back, it's every April. Um, it's an opportunity to meet some pretty impressive young men and women. You will see the next generation of leaders. Uh, you also leave there feeling pretty good about our future. Uh, James and Roma certainly are special. They are special for a number of reasons, but one of the reasons is, they joined our program, uh, STEM program in fourth grade, they both started in fourth grade, saw the program all the way through to the end. So, they are not nearly as cute as they were before. Uh, but they certainly appear to not be much worse for the wear. Uh, so what I would like to do, I'd ask them to, to one more time, to comment. Uh, they're gonna share with you what their future plans are as they leave our STEM program, and maybe even ask them to reflect a little bit on the educational experience, the STEM, what STEM has done for them. And I believe we will start with Roma, is that right?
Uh, so, as I mentioned earlier, um, for the next eight years, I will be attending, uh, a joint medical program between Virginia Commonwealth University and the Medical College of Virginia. Um, so I don't have to declare what, um, specialty I will be choosing, um, but I intend to, in, um, my sixth year of medical school, to, um, uh, pursue, uh, a specialty of past biology. So, definitely in the STEM Academy, um, I, I've, since the beginning, since fourth grade, I came to the STEM Academy thinking that, you know, I wanted to be here so that I have more opportunities to pursue biology. And I remember, um, in Mr. Skinner's class in tenth grade and in middle school, when we had this engineering project, I think I just like went home and I was like, Mom, I think, think I made a mistake joining STEM, because I was, I was, I didn't like engineering, and I, I thought that it would just be a challenge and that I, I made some type of mistake because it wasn't on my path, it wasn't in my biology, um, road. Uh, but then I quickly realized that the best part about STEM was its interdisciplinary nature. Um, the fact that Mr. Skinner and other teachers push us beyond our comfort zone is how we grow, and if I was in just a regular program and I, and I had just stuck to biology, it would have been much different, and I don't think I would have had the same number of opportunities, and I don't think I would have been the same person who I am today, so yeah.
Alright, um, so I, I will be attending Stanford University in the fall to study electrical engineering and computer science. Um, for the STEM Academy, um, I think my favorite part of it has been our peers. Um, I, uh, we've discussed what we've done, and I, I think our entire group of students, the thirty-one graduating with us and all of those that have been part of the, uh, academy from fourth grade, um, are incredibly bright, incredibly driven, and help to, um, you know, motivate us as well. Um, you know, being surrounded by all of those l- like-minded students, um, is very, um, you know, en- enriching to the educational experience, and it's been vital to my growth, and I'm sure Roma would agree.
And I think I'd be remiss if we didn't just speak to, um, all of the STEM teachers as well, not just Mr. Skinner, but it, it's a, it's a compilation of genius. Um, Jeanette Offenbacher is another, um, great asset to the STEM program, who actually works with students on developing their resume and how to find an internship and market themselves and make themselves valuable. Um, it, from fourth grade on, it is a, really truly a testament to the teamwork and, and the genius that are, um, our SMCPS STEM teachers as well. So, I just wanted to just put that little plug in there as well, um.
I was just gonna say, it's really not fair to the other academies, just not fair to have them compare, but.
They're like children, Mr. Skinner, and we love all of our children, and then some are this and some are that, but we love every single one of them.
I got your meaning.
Yeah. As a middle son, I had a whole comp now. It, it, it really, it really is, um, it's, it's quite, it's quite impressive, it's quite impressive, Mr. Skinner, in particular, uh, the way you motivate the students to come into your sphere. They, they definitely, um, they take a great deal from their interaction with you and, and the teaching that you do, and you will find a moment when you're on a porch and you can look back and say, look, look at, look at the people with whom I've, I've worked, look at the people who I've taught, and look at what they've done to make the world a better place. James, I'm sure you're gonna use, you, I'm gonna, you're gonna use it for good, right?
Of course.
Absolutely, you know? You're gonna, absolutely, you know, um, and, and Roma, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure. You've, you've taught me a great deal in two years, and, you know, if you can teach somebody like as old as me what you've taught me, then, my goodness, the world is quite bright. So, just thank you.
And, and I agree with you, Ms. Mandis and Dr. Smith, about the teachers, the educators who help these students to get where they are. And I congratulate the both of you for doing a wonderful job and taking advantage of the opportunities that are available at Saint Mary's County Public Schools. And I wanna say a quote, "Teaching is the profession that teaches all the other professions." So, I'm very proud of our educators and what they are doing to bring out the best in our students every day. Thank you.
When people, um, make disparaging comments about public education, uh, we just need to run a clip of Roma and James and say, do you wanna say that again? You know, um, I, I mean, we could, we could do it about the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, we could do it about any of the academies. Um, I don't think, I think a lot of people buy into the narrative that, um, public education, uh, isn't serving students, that we're not producing, um, students who are gonna be successful citizens. I think those people need to wake up and, um, see for themselves what we get a chance to see so often, which is, public education is alive and well, and, um, you guys have, have demonstrated that very well. So, thanks for sharing this evening.
I'm gonna say, what a wonderful opportunity you all had, and each of the students in the STEM program. I did get to come, and I've come every year to the showcase. And I enjoy going around and talking to each of the students to see their projects, where they went, what they've learned, and where they're going. Um, whether they've, like, the one young man that I talked to, he did a, uh, did his internship at, uh, Saint Mary's Hospital, and he said, you know, it was a choice between that and something else. And he said, in doing this internship, I found that that's not the path I wanted to go. So, I think even learning what you don't wanna do in the future is also, uh, a great opportunity. And I have to say, a lot of the students that I talk to, yes, you know, I, I walk out and say, man, you know, what bright young students, bright futures, but I also feel incredibly dumb. I just stand there and go, uh-huh, uh-huh, okay. So, um, but, you know, I, I know that you will go far, and all the other students too, that have had the opportunity to go through the, you know, some academy and the other academies too, but, um, you know, go far in their future. So, thank you for sharing.
I, I would just add, um, that I was looking at the photograph, and, and it appears about half of your graduating class are, are ladies. And, uh, I mentioned this some, some time ago, when I was a freshman in engineering school, everybody looked like me. And, uh, and it's just very heartening to see so many young ladies that are, uh, focusing in on science, engineering, technology. I think it's, uh, it's, uh, enormous resource that's kind of been untapped until recently. So.
And, and don't be fooled, James, I apologize, but they're actually our best, they're our best students, too.
They're our best students.
I wouldn't necessarily say that.
They're his students.
I'm getting myself in trouble.
Yes, and we warned you about that.
So, just congratulations, I think, I mean, both of you, phenomenal job, I mean, and to everyone in the program. There's a lot of dedication, obviously, there's been a lot of dedication there for a number of years. And, um, you know, to Mrs. Allen's point about people who are critical of public e- education, I think it's, I think we have more room to be innovative than, um, some of the other choices of schools. And I think you guys have definitely taken that innovation and built the partnerships with the community, um, that have given our students the best choices that they could have, and it's difficult to match that elsewhere. So, congratulations.
Yeah, I bet, I bet you to say, you're probably gonna be frustrated with your first year of college, because you're really doing, you know, master's level, doctorate level, research level work. I mean, this is, I mean, it's just stunning. It's really just stunning. And you have a really good supervisor too, by the way, you know, the STEM supervi- uh, pathway, and she loves every single one of them equally.
All of them.
Yes.
Wait, we were just talking, oh.
I, I do hope that, um, you will both come back and share with us, um, you know, after your first or second year. Let us know how things are going. I'm really interested to know what you think, and, um, and how your preparation, um, how that has affected you, um, once you're there.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know what? Take the rest of the year off. You have a awards assembly tomorrow though, right? And your picnic is on Friday.
Yes, that's correct.
And if not, we'll, uh, we'll see you a week from Friday.
We have to shake some hands.
Good morning.
Good morning. Friday, Friday the first.
Do you want me to just stay right where you are?
Okay, okay, I'm trying to minimize that, Roma, but I can't, okay, there's the, it's the mask.
I'm gonna say, do you have two masks?
No, you're fine. Who's first?
Not us. Doctor Ma. Doctor Ma's first.
He's tapping.
Our leader down there.
Sorry.
He must be nervous.
He's like reverberating right here, like.
Sorry.
Mr. Ma, are you, uh, you're not, you're not in this.
Pull up a chair.
Oh, he's gonna sit where you are.
Yeah, he's just, I'm, I'm gonna leave.
You're part of the steering committee, and you are a boy, so let's, let's get some boy, you know, Donovan can't carry it all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, I am so proud, uh, to sit amongst, um, these students who are to my left and to my right. Um, this is a group of student leaders who throughout this year have, um, brought the student voice to the forefront in, um, working with, uh, Dr. Smith, with myself, with principals, um, in their principals advisory committees as, as, as they'll talk about. The Student Leadership Advisory Council, or the SLAC, the chief slackers here, um, have, uh, met regularly throughout the year, and they're gonna talk about their meetings, but, um, what has really been powerful is the leadership of Roma and each of these steering committee members. Uh, we had two from each of the high schools who have met to plan, um, quarterly meetings, uh, throughout the year, bringing, as Roma said earlier, those topics, those ideas, the, their, um, their vision to the forefront. So, I am going to say very little, and I'm going to turn it over to them. But the purpose of the group has been to solicit their input, um, in the issues that are facing them and our school system. So, with that, and without further ado, I will turn it over to Donovan and Taylor here.
Uh, hello, everybody. My name's Donovan Weekly, and for about the past two years, I've been on the SLAC committee. And, um, in order to kind of get the entirety of the student body together, we've had quarterly sessions each year, about one meeting per marking period. And that's where multiple children from each middle school and each high, just each high school, just each high school, would come together and discuss things that are going on in our schools, how we can better our school environments and everything like that. Usually, um, this year, we were talking about civility, communication, and things of that theme. And so, one of the biggest discussions that we had is, how do we bring about this change that we wanna bring to our schools? And that's where students would split up to talk to people from other schools, to see that similar issues were happening in their schools, or maybe that their schools were tackling these same issues with similar solutions, and, you know, solutions that we could bring back to our own schools. And, uh, I think one of the biggest discussions we've had this year is, how do you find your voice, and how do you, how do you find the motivation to be that change that your school may need? And, um, so it's just been a lot of talk about finding your voice. And I think that's something that a lot of kids struggle with, because we tend to believe that, oh, we can't make change, we're only one person, you can't do that, you know, but that's not true whatsoever. And so, um, in order to kind of be a student leader, you kind of need to focus yourself. You can't, you can't change everything all at once. You have to go step by step. And so, that's why we've, we've chosen certain themes to talk about each year. And this year civility happened to be a thing, but towards the middle of the year, um, you know, things changed. We, we realized that we need to change our narrative due to things going on in the nation, and like, like what was said earlier in this, um, meeting. What's happening in another county, somewhere all the way across the country, could very well be the same issue that we're having here in our neighboring counties. And so, um, from that, developing those themes and everything, we also had to discuss, how do you communicate these ideas to your peers? And, um, that's where we would go back to our own school groups, such as Great Mills, or Chopticon, or Leonardtown, or Fairlead. And we would talk about what, what are we gonna do to start making this change, and that actually leads into the next subject, which happens to be the school sessions that we have at our, um, schools.
Okay, okay, so pretty much, just like Donovan said, yeah, I got, so pretty much like Donovan said. So, so, so pretty much, so pretty much what Donovan said is that, um, we do go to those, uh, superintendent meetings, and then we bring them back to our own schools. And each school kind of handles them differently, um, and we usually have them, like, every month. Um, I know I can speak for Leonardtown and say, we've had them every month. Um, I assume it's the same for you guys. And so, pretty much, we do talk about, we bring back to our schools what we did talk about these big meetings. So, civility, voice, um, how we can improve our schools, and how we can have an impact on them. And our school-based actions have been anything from like peer pre-mentoring to, um, yeah, raider cut. So, for us, it was a big unity thing amongst our school. And other schools have examples, many examples just like it. Um, and middle schools have actually, when we were at the, um, the March Summit, whatever we'd like to call it, they were telling us that they'd like to have something of the sort. And they'd like to have their voice in their communities. So, we thought that was a very good impact that we've had. Um, and we hope that we can continue that, and at least inspire the middle schoolers as well to continue that in a high school. So, yeah, do you have anything else? Okay, sorry.
Uh, so I'm Faith, I'm from Chopticon. Um, I've also been on the SLAC for two years now. And at the summit, it was a lot of fun. I ended up working with the middle schoolers, which I was a little iffy about at first, but I thoroughly enjoyed myself. Um, the teacher, Miss McCloskey, Miss McCloskey, um, she was phenomenal, and she really talked to the students about how in order to have good communication and to portray your, um, emotions and your feelings, you have to understand your feelings. And you have to understand yourself, so you can present yourself in a, um, civil manner to others, so they can give their ideas. And, um, something that really hit home with me was when I was talking with Margaret Brent, which was my alumni middle school. And they, I was like, so what'd you learn today? What are you gonna bring back? And they were like, it's okay for other people to have their own opinions. And that really struck me, 'cause I'm like, at that age, that's a great thing to be learning, 'cause that's something you're gonna need your whole life. And so, I was just so, I was like proud of them, and I was just so excited, 'cause like, to me, that was a successful day. If, 'cause for them to learn that, that was, that was very important. So, Roma?
Um, so I, while Faith was helping with the middle school, um, we also had a high school section of the youth summit. And throughout the day, we had some inner, um, both activities, in the sense that when we did like Snapchat simulations, uh, that was with both sides, and we were just, um, trying to talk about online communication, um, the dangers of it, but also sometimes the hidden messengers that we look over, um, when we're trying to be safe, when we're trying to be emotionally safe. Um, but with the high school, um, Mr. Nathan Kimbrough from, I believe, Calver County. Um, he presented, uh, more about the BU aspect of the summit. Um, so a lot of times, in high school especially, we are incredibly stressed, and, I mean, I know any of us can attest to that. We, we do have a lot on our plate, and sometimes, because of that, we may overlook, um, just how easy it is to not only be kind to each other, but just to be ourselves. Um, and to, we easily forget that we're not robots, and that we're not supposed to, um, just be, you know, going from activity to activity. So, um, he was mainly talking about not just de-stressing ourselves, but also that aspect of belonging, and the fact that if we can make other people, um, feel like they belong, then school would be more positive atmosphere where everyone would want to attend. Um, so a lot of what Mr. Nathan Kimbrough talked about, we are trying to implement in some of our schools, especially at Great Mills with MTSS, and some of the other schools with their, uh, peer-to-peer support.
So, um, it, as you can tell, these are incredible student leaders. Um, and what's been really fantastic, uh, over the last couple of years, is having students come back and be part of the SLAC group from year to year, because they carry that leadership forward, and they share it with others. So, as we look into next year, um, many of these students will still be here. Uh, we have two that are graduating, and so others will, uh, be sitting in their chairs. Uh, Lake, you'll be joining the group, I hope, um, in helping to lead, uh, this as well. And so, um, I think, as, as you said, Mrs. Allen, the future is bright, and it's also right in front of us, and, um, it's a fantastic opportunity for us to hear from them.
Absolutely.
I just, I think, I think it's a great, um, program. I've actually, I've had a couple of students that asked, um, as I've been out in about this week, if this was gonna continue. Um, I think it is very easy for everyone as adults to think that your voice doesn't matter, and that, you know, that we could, we should, as we've been doing as parents, to just tell you what to do. But at this point in your lives, you now have a voice, and it's your school community, and it's your, it, it's, it's, you have, you have the ownership. And I think that, um, you having that voice and a method to get that back to the adults that make the decisions is fabulous. So.
I think this year in particular, um, students across the nation have shown that, um, they can affect change. They can be very effective spokespeople, and, um, and so I applaud all of you for wanting to, to participate in this and take it back to your schools and make such a significant difference.
I think you've done a fantastic job, a phenomenal job. You are incredible leaders, incredible speakers. And I know that you are making a difference by taking it back to your individual schools and working with students, your mentorship programs, and other programs that you have. So, students will feel like they belong, and they are a part, that they are respected, that they are appreciated, and that they are, they can be themselves, and that we're all different, and which can evolve into having a safe and nurturing learning and, um, school environment. Thank you all very much. You are the future, and as someone said, you're right in front of us. And the future looks bright. The future looks bright.
I'm gonna say, as, as an employer, like if I was an employer, the skill set that you would bring is invaluable. You have been able to go back and listen, and that is huge. Listen and take those ideas, and then implement them. You know, as you, as you move on, whether you run a company or you're part of a company, please, uh, keep those skills.
As I have said, I don't know how many times, um, you are often the brightest part of my day, spending time with all of you. This is a, this is a really brilliant group. Um, this is a very motivated group. This is a very get-to-the-task-at-hand, but it's also a joyful group. It's also a fun-loving group. Um, it's, you know, they're, 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 you know, they're living, they're living full lives, and, and they share that with one another, and it's really, it's really great. It's, it's really great. So, um, I think we'll do it maybe for one more year, I guess. Well, we'll see. Lake, you'll have to come in and see. We're gonna, as long as I'm here, uh, like I said, this is the, it's the brightest spot of, it's the brightest spot of my, my day, spending time with all of you. Um, this year's summit was really, was really the best we've had so far, because they can, they completely planned it. It's all them. They hashed it out, they kicked it around, they came up, they collaborated online, they collabor- collaborated in person, they broke it all up. They basically shoved Dr. Ma and I out of the way, and they just went to it. And that's, and that's the, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the greatest thing, and you should be very proud, every one of you, of what you've accomplished over the last two years, this year in particular, and, and I can't wait. You're gonna go off and leave us, you're gonna go and whatever. We'll be okay, though. We're gonna do great. You just wait, and you say, maybe we'll, maybe you can come back for the summit. Or FaceTime in or something. But just thank you very much, and it's, it's, what a, what a great, what, what a great way to end our last meeting with, with, uh, with Roma. We start with giving you flowers, we talk about how smart you are, what an incredible woman.
And your leadership skills.
And then we finish with how well she's, she's gathered together a great group of people, and led them to wonderful things in her senior year. So, just very, very nice. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, does anyone have anything else?
Alright, with that, I will give everyone the reminder, graduation's next week and I know you know that, but I'm also gonna tell you that they're live streaming.
We are live streaming all of them in HD.
For those people who can't get tickets or can't get to Southern Maryland, it will be livestreamed. Alright, anyone, we're all good, anyone? Alright, and with that, we are adjourned.